At the Rosstown Council Monday, October 6, 2025 to order. I will be participating via Zoom from NYU Langone Health Kimmel Pavilion, 424 East 34th Street, 13th floor lobby, New York, New York 10016, where I am caring for my son. Ben, do I need to say anything else?
No, that's sufficient.
Okay, number two, posting of the agenda and any changes to the agenda. Krista, has the agenda been posted?
The agenda has been posted.
And I assume there's no changes. Number three, council member reports on meetings and conversations. Council members may disclose any meetings, conversations, or correspondence with residents or stakeholders concerning matters appearing on this agenda. This is for transparency only and does not disqualify council members from participating in the discussion or action. Does anyone, any council member have anything to report? Seeing none, we will move on to number four. Town council consideration to adopt Resolution Number 2542 to A, order preparation of an Election Code Section 9212 report evaluating the Friends of the Ross Firehouse Initiative measure; B, authorize the town manager to negotiate and execute agreements with appropriate consultants, including RSG Inc., City Gate Associates, and Mary McGrath Architects and other necessary cons- other necessary cons- I'll try again. Other necessary consultants to assist with the preparation of the 9212 report. Is that okay? Is that coming across?
Yes.
Okay, and C, authorize an additional budget appropriation in an amount not to exceed $85,000 to cover anticipated costs for consultant services. We will now hear the staff report from town manager Johnson.
Good afternoon, mayor and council members. The item before you this evening is a resolution that orders the preparation of an Election Code 9212 report. Here is a brief background and some more details. On June 30, 2025, proponents of the Friends of Ross Firehouse Initiative, FORF as its acronym, submitted a petition seeking to qualify for the ballot and ordinance requiring the town of Ross to maintain an operational fire station within town limits, prioritize rehabilitation or reconstruction of the recently closed firehouse at 33 Sir Francis Drake Boulevard, and staff the station at 2024 levels, defined as at least one active fire engine, one reserve engine, and a minimum of two firefighters on duty at all times. If adopted by the town council or the voters, the measure would amend the Ross Municipal Code and could only be repealed or amended by a future vote of the electorate. Proponents of the FORF Citizens Initiative submitted signatures to the town clerk late last Thursday afternoon. The town clerk has an appointment to submit the signatures to the county election officer first thing tomorrow morning. The election officer has 30 days to verify the signatures. After verification, staff is required to submit the verified signatures to the town council at your next regularly, next regular meeting, which is likely to be November 13. Pursuant to California Election Code 9212, the town council may direct staff to prepare a report evaluating the impacts of a proposed citizens initiative. The intent is to ensure that voters and the town council are fully informed about the potential fiscal, land use, and service level consequences of the initiative. Town staff will have 30 days from the November 13 council meeting date to submit the 9212 report to the council, which is likely to be your December 11 meeting. The agenda packet for your December 11 meeting is published on December 5. A Section 9212 report will provide the town council and voters with independent and objective information on fiscal impacts, short term and long term, land use consistency with the town's general plan, the housing element, and the Civic Center Facilities Master Plan, service delivery and operational feasibility, and other matters as directed by the town council. Professional expertise is required to prepare a comprehensive analysis of this potential initiative and in the very short turnaround time required by the Election Code. If the town council orders the preparation of the 9212 report, town staff will retain a firm called RSG Incorporated to serve as the lead consultant on the preparation of the report. RSG will leverage existing information and resources to ensure that the report is accurate and objective. RSG will review prior cost estimates and engage with third-party experts hired by the town who are familiar with the closed fire station and costs for reopening the station. City Gate Associates will be retained by the town to provide operational and fire service expertise, and Mary McGrath Architects is expected to provide architectural, engineering, and facilities design expertise. Other professional experts may need to be hired to provide assistance as yet to be determined. A budget appropriation of $85,000 of $85,000 is necessary to obtain the professional expertise and the capacity to prepare the Section 9212 report. Funding would be drawn from the town operating fund's undesignated fund balance. The town council may also choose to order the Section 9212 report to address additional elements than those that I just outlined. Alternatively, the town council may choose not to order the preparation of the 9212 report, in which case voters and the town council may not be fully informed about the potential fiscal, land use, and service level consequences of the initiative. And for this reason, it is recommended that the town council adopt Resolution Number 2542 to A, order the preparation of the Election Code Section 92 report evaluating the potential Friends of the Ross Firehouse Initiative measure; B, authorize the town manager to negotiate and execute agreements with appropriate consultants, including RSG, City Gate Associates, Mary McGrath Architects, and other necessary consultants to assist with the preparation of the 9212 report, and authorize an additional budget appropriation in an amount not to exceed $85,000 to cover anticipated costs for these professional services. That's the end of my report. Thank you.
Council members' questions for town manager Johnson?
So I have several. So the first question is, why are we holding this special session when this item could be on our normal scheduled council meeting on Thursday? I was sorry, I said, why are we holding this special session when this item could be on our normal agenda this Thursday?
Thank you, Councilmember Salter. Given the importance of this issue, it's important to have all five council members present, and one of the council members will not be present on Thursday.
Okay, so the signatures have not been verified. Is that correct?
No, they need to be verified by the county election officer.
Okay, so what is the hurry? If we, we're not even sure right now if the, the, the signatures are valid and this will be a petition. So why, why, why rush this meeting right now?
So the, the timing is such that the, as I mentioned in my report, the town clerk is required to submit these to the county clerks up to the county election officer. She's not allowed to sit on them. She has an appointment tomorrow morning at 8:30, and then the election officer has up to 30 days. It could be 30, it could be five, it could be two. And so we are required, once we've, once we've received notification from the county election officer that they have been verified.
We, we have not received any notification that they're verified. Just please make that for-
Matt, Matt, let her, let Krista finish her answer. No, let, let Krista finish her answer.
We, we have not gotten any word that there have been verified signatures and this is a valid petition. So what I'm asking you is, you called this meeting on Friday for a Monday meeting with basically one business day notice to the public that this is so important.
Is there a question?
Yes. Why are we doing this if we don't have a-
Would you like me to answer the rest of your question? Or do you, do you not want me to speak?
I would like, yes, absolutely.
So now I have to remember what your question was.
Why are we rushing?
So we have, once the county election officer has verified the signatures, and it could take two days, it could take 30 days. Once that has been submitted to us, we are required as staff to bring those, that verification to the town council at your next regularly scheduled meeting. As you are aware, the town council in Ross has one regularly scheduled meeting per month. So your next meeting is November 13. So it's very likely, almost 100% likely, that we will be receiving that information from the county clerk's office, and we will have to bring you those signatures on your November 13 meeting.
Okay, but we're meeting right now to discuss doing a report based on this petition that is unvalidated at this point. So why are we not waiting for the verification, then bringing it to the council in the normal meeting and asking for us to do this report?
I'm happy to answer that. The Election Code gives the town council the authority to request a report at any point in time. Last minute in time they can ask for it is when the signatures have been verified by the county. So if a public entity thinks the report's going to take longer than 30 days to prepare, public entities will often order those reports earlier to give the consultants time to prepare the report.
Okay, so if we, it's unverified and the signatures are not validated, are we still going to be on the hook to pay for this consultant report?
Yes.
So we will have to pay for this even if the ballot, the ballot signatures aren't valid?
We'll have to pay whatever time the consultants have already put into the report.
Okay, and that, and you're asking us to authorize $85,000?
I'm asking you to appropriate $85,000 out of your undesignated fund balance in the operating fund. That will go into the General Government Department budget. And that money, so I will have the budget to then engage, to execute agreements with consultants. That doesn't mean I'm going to spend, I'm going to have to spend all the $85,000, but the budget amount will be there. Anything that's not spent on that goes back into the, the fund balance at the end of the fiscal year.
Okay, so why is it we need this report? The town manager and the mayor wrote a 30-page frequently asked question report on behalf of the town. Is that not sufficient? Why do we need to engage these consultants and spend more money?
The Election Code 9212 report analyzes the impacts of the potential ballot initiative. So it's focused on the impacts of the ballot measure. The frequently asked question document includes several other topics besides that, for one. Some of the frequently asked questions, some of the answers I pulled from consultant studies that were done from the past. For example, there's several questions that talk about how much will it cost to renovate the existing station? How much will it cost to build new? And I reference, in the frequently, the answers in that document, I reference the Mary McGrath study that was done in 2019, 2020 timeframe. So, but that needs to be updated if we are to provide the council with complete information, as much information as we can in the 9212 report, because that is a fiscal impact of this potential ballot measure. Because the ballot measure is asking, is, would say that we have to keep operating fire station. So we have this information, but the information is five years old.
I, I thought that there was a revision made when you, when the town came back with the updated master facilities plan. I thought there were updates made to those reports. Is that not correct? Because I, the, the cost went up to 21 million. The original cost of the facilities master plan, I believe, was 14.
So if, if we're at, if somebody is asking the question, how much would it cost to renovate the current, the station? The document that we have to rely on is five years old.
Okay, that makes sense.
That was not renovate, that was not updated when we did the facilities master plan. In fact, the facilities master plan does not include a fire station in it. There's not a mention of, that I recollect about renovating the fire station.
Okay, my last question is, the public was given very little time to be notified of this meeting. The timing of this meeting at 3 o'clock in the afternoon is very inconvenient for the public. Why was this time chosen?
You said that you could be here from 3 PM on, on Monday. I polled the council as to their availability.
No, no, we had a closed session scheduled for 3 o'clock.
I asked the council a week ago, last Friday, if you were going to be out of town on any days within the coming month. I said something like that. And I asked the council if there were any times that you were going to be out of town that would help with scheduling purposes. Councilmember Salter, you did not respond to me. So last Monday, I asked you. By that time, I had started to get here from other council members. Oh, they're out of town this date. Oh, they're available this date, but not the morning. I started getting more information, started narrowing it down to being able to do it on Monday. You told me you were available from 3 PM on on Monday. I grabbed it.
Yeah, it, it's more about the public, of their ability to be able to be aware of what's happening and having time to come in and speak and have their voices heard. So again, we have a normally scheduled meeting on Thursday, and so you and, or the mayor, I guess, decided it was too important, since one council member was out, we had to do this.
So can I ask you, if the, if the tables were turned and you were not able to come to this meeting, are you telling me you would like me to disregard you and not try to do my hardest to have all five council members be able to participate? Are you saying, forget about me next time?
Next time, if it's, if the public, for the public to have the time to come in and be properly noticed should be the goal of this council. We are supposed to speak on their behalf. It's not about me. It's not about Julie. It's not about Bill. So if the public has enough notice about something that is very important to them, that's the most important to me. And I have actually, Krista, I have missed meetings. I have missed meetings while I was traveling. I've zoomed into meetings. I probably have the worst attendance record of all the council members. So please, you may not believe me, but believe me when I tell you, I would much rather the public have the chance to understand and know what's happening in their town for their public safety and have a chance to digest and learn and come in and speak, because that's what, what I believe is the most important.
What I have to rely on is the council adopted procedures. And as I said, as I sent via email in response to you over the weekend, the council procedures manual asks, gives direction to the town manager that everything be done to ensure that as many members of the council can be, can be present. And that's what I did. The, we are required to provide 72-hour notice for a regular meeting, 24-hour notice for a special meeting. We have complied with the noticing requirements. We made special arrangements that today it could be, we have a, we are paying additional money for audiovisual technician to be here so that this can be recorded and can be zoomed. And we've posted in all the places, so.
Other council members with questions?
I have a question, Krista. This has to do with the amount of money that's being requested. So it says an additional $85,000 to fund consultant costs. But are there contracts that, that you'll be making with others that you can use whatever funding you're allowed to spend up to for some of these other contracts? Isn't there a certain amount, aren't you able to spend a certain amount of money at your discretion for various contracts or various expenses?
So there's a nuance there. I am authorized to, our purchasing policy allows me to purchase items or enter into agreements if they're under $50,000. I don't expect for any one agreement with any one consulting firm to be more than $50,000. However, we don't have the funding. There's, there's the purchasing authority, and there's also the appropriations authority. And I do not, we have a very small and a very tight budget. I don't have those kinds of funds that are undesignedated in the budget that the council is actually already appropriated. So I wanted to be very transparent in that and not try to grab money from other departments. So the council knows that this is the purpose of those funds. If those funds are not expended, then they remain in the budget and return to the operating fund at the end, the fund balance at the end of the fiscal year.
So you're saying that even though you have the authority to spend $50,000 on individual items, these, the sum total of all of the contracts for this report will be no more than $85,000?
That's all the funding I'm going to have available unless I return to the council for an additional appropriation.
Is it likely, since there are many groups, RSG, City Gate, Mary McGrath, others, that this could exceed $85,000?
Part of is what the direction that I receive from the council today, as I mentioned in my report. The council could ask that something other, something else be studied in this report that could be an impact of the citizens initiative that I might, may not have identified. So that could affect, that could affect the cost.
And then usually when there's a contract, the council sees the contractor and the budget. Will we be seeing these in the future? Or is this a one-time authorization and you can make all of these contracts at your discretion?
I will certainly, once they're executed, I will certainly send copies to the council. We can put them on the website, in fact, for everyone to see. But I won't be returning to, usually what I do is, if a contract is over $50,000, it'll show up on the council agenda and it will authorize the town manager to execute the agreements. And I have a staff report, and attached to it is the scope of work and usually the actual agreement itself. In this case, the, the action is I'm asking the council to authorize me to negotiate and execute. So that means you're authorizing me to engage in negotiations with the consultants, to firm up a scope of work. And then we have a template professional services agreement that we use for all of our contracts, which was created by the town attorney's office. They provide their insurance, et cetera, and they are authorized to proceed with their work.
So then, so, okay, I understand. So the council won't see this again. This is it. We're authorizing this money. You're making the, you're making the arrangements, and we would see a report, and that's it.
Yeah, and I'd be happy to send you the, the actual consultant services agreements when they're executed and done, so you can see them. But they would be for information only.
Thank you.
I have a question, and, and that is, how will the consultant analyze FORF's design and costs when those designs and costs have not yet been made available?
Just a moment. So as I've mentioned, thank you, mayor. As I mentioned, the Election Code 9212 report will analyze the impacts of the potential ballot measure, not information that has been submitted or rumored to be in the works by the ballot measure proponents. If this information is provided in the future to the council, the council could consider at that time asking staff to evaluate it. So, and then I would, I would need, very likely, if it's about, I've, I understand that FORF might be coming forward with architectural drawings, or I understand from Fire Chief Mahoney that they are engaging the services of some consultant from Colorado to do a feasibility study about the cost to operate a station. If they do do that and they present it to the council or send it into the council, the council could bring it up at a council meeting and they could say, town manager, we've received this. Could you please evaluate it? You could let me know what it is you'd like me to do with it. And I would very likely, because it's, I'm not an architect, is I would have to engage the services of a professional expert or architect to be able to provide the council with that information. So mayor, that could be done in the future, but you can't evaluate something you don't have.
Yeah, understood. Another question for me. What are the downsides if we decide to save the money and not order this report?
So again, the, the purpose is to provide information to the council that may assist your decision-making process when you are presented with the verified signatures, which we anticipate to be at your November meeting. So if the downside of not ordering the report is that the council will not receive the additional information from the third-party professionals. If you, if the council wants this additional information, if you want this report, my recommendation is that you authorize me to hire the professional experts so that you have that third-party objective expertise and so that you can, you have a firm that has the capacity. We do not have the capacity or the expertise on town staff to prepare this report for you with any kind of comprehensiveness. So my recommendation that if you do want this report, that you authorize me to be able to contract with the professional experts and that you provide me with the appropriation. The downside is you won't have that information if you decide not to order this report.
Councilmember Kersher or Dowling, do you have any questions?
I was just going to make sure I understood. So what we would have is a third-party recommendation, and we would also have more up-to-date information, not 2019 information, but 2025 information about fiscal issues, correct?
So I have one additional question. The, the FORF has been-
Wait, wait a, wait a second. Does Bill have any questions?
Why don't you go ahead, Matt, and then I'll-
Oh, so, so FORF has been very clear that they're coming out with a plan. They've toured the site. They, they said in their email that came out yesterday, their plan's going to come out in the next 30 to 90 days. For me, it seems like it would be, the, the money would be well-spent to analyze that plan from the town's perspective and see if it's a worthwhile plan to, for the, for the council and the, to pursue. So I, again, I'm wondering why not wait?
Is that a question?
Yeah, that, that, I, I have a comment. I guess it's not really a question. Let me just verify one thing, Krista. This report that is going to be prepared in analyzing the financial impact will discuss the cost of renovating the existing station, not rebuilding it, because that's what, that's what the initiative prioritizes. Well, it says to the extent practical, but, you know, if that's a possibility, then I think the report needs to cover that. What does that cost? On top of the other costs, is that correct?
So the initiative, we would need to know, how much does it cost to renovate? Because the initiative language wants the, wants the town to prioritize keeping it where it is. So that, to me, implies renovation or demoing and building right where it is. So the economic impact would be both because the professionals that we've hired have said that it is not, it is, it would cost us a lot more funding to renovate than it would be to build. So if the council, that is an economic impact, is how much would it cost to renovate? We have got the figure, but it's five years old. How much would it cost to build new? We have the figure, but it's five years old. If it can't be where it is now, if the council doesn't want it, then it needs to be, we would need, the initiative says that it would need to be somewhere else. So where would it be? We'd have to acquire property. We'd have to build somewhere else. We'd have, it's, there's a lot of, it's a, it's a, there are a lot of different buckets of economic impacts. And remember, it's not just the economic impact. It's land use. It's housing. There are a lot of things and thus the need for professional expertise to provide that expertise and there's subject areas, right? But it's capacity.
Well, I understand, but you know, I think, well, again, this is commentary. I'll wait till the discussion. It's not a question.
Okay. Any other council members with questions for Manager Johnson? Okay, then let's move to public comment. First, we'll take public comment from people in the chambers.
There are members of the public that want public comment here, Mayor.
There are, yes. Okay.
Sure. Happy to help. Dear Mayor McMillan and fellow council members, first of all, I need to publicly fix the record. Councilman Salter purposely misrepresented the FAQ authors from the town of Ross. It was McMillan and Robbins, not McMillan and the town manager. So please be more careful in your future comments. So Mayor McMillan and council members, thank you for being such good and conscientious stewards of the town of Ross's finances. I see that the town of Ross will have to potentially expend $85,000 in unanticipated consultant fees in order to place the Friends of Ross Firehouse's ballot initiative on the California ballot in June 2026. I believe it is only fair to ask any citizen who creates additional expenses to the town of Ross, be asked to reimburse the town of Ross for those expenses. For example, if you want to cut down a tree on your property, then you pay for the service of the town arborist. In a similar vein, this afternoon, I asked the town council to instruct the town manager, Ms. Johnson, to make ongoing demands on the FORF organization to pay for any and all costs incurred by the town related to its FORF June ballot initiative within 30 days of a written notice being presented. FORF claims to have raised multiple hundreds of thousands of dollars in their campaign and is a 501(c)(3) entity will at some point have to make their finances available to the public. Let FORF prove that they are good neighbors for all of Ross and not just hoarding the donations so that they can buy legacy Ross Valley Fire Engine 18 at auction. In addition, the town council needs to demand to review the fee proposal from BRW Architects. Then the follow-up questions to BRW Architects should be, one, how often and two, by how much and percentage, does BRW get additional services on their project? I suggest that any architectural contract should be reviewed by Ross resident Dan Whiney. I am currently a no vote on the initiative for FORF until they can actually back up their plans with agreed contracts, which according to a town-wide email blast on Sunday, October 5th, could take additional 16 to 90 days. I trust this current and past council's rational decisions over the past decades, more than a group of self-appointed and described experts that came into being less than six months ago and were conspicuously absent during prior discussions or simply want a redo because they don't like the results they got. Sound familiar? By the way, has anyone questioned how FORF was provided with access to the town of Ross's email list? Was the town of Ross compensated for sharing the emails of all its citizens? My personal identifiable information, PII, was shared with an external organization without my permission and there are laws against that. I think the town's attorney should ensure there were no violation had occurred. Thank you for taking the time this afternoon and thank you, Councilman Sletter, for providing me with the courtesy of not being on your phone during my public comments.
Are there more people, Cindy? Can you please state your name because it's hard for me to-
Yes, hello. My name is Mani Hussain.
Thank you.
And I didn't hear the last speaker's name. Was that?
Michael Roosevelt.
Thank you, Michael. So one, thank you for, for the opportunity to review the latest machinations here. I think as a five-year resident of Ross, homeowner in the space, I have seen my homeowner's insurance, as I think we all have, move in the direction we don't like it. I think we've seen fire danger increase. And I say that as, not as an expert in fire, but merely as somebody who's observing what's happening, we are going to need more, not less, ability to fight fire in the future. That's certainly something I firmly believe. That said, it seems prudent to me to carefully consider the impact of closing a fire station at a time like this, or rather to remain unable to fight our own fires and rely on our neighbors. That said, you know, I'm certainly very interested in seeing what it can take to preserve the firefighting capacity and the EMT capacity in, in our town. And I think that needs to be a prudent decision. I think the, the comment that we don't even have an official ballot measure yet, but if cost is our concern, spending $85,000 or agreeing to spend $85,000 before we even know if this is something that will make the ballot, does not necessarily seem like the right move to me. I operate a small business, so that's, that's my perspective on that. One last comment, just in future, three o'clock on days when school's getting out, I've got a couple of kids who get out, there's no parking around here at that time. So difficult to make, but happy to be here and thank you for listening to my comments.
Thank you.
I'm Barbara Call, 8 Redwood Drive. I have not spoken in several years since you first put out your master plan. I was the only Ross resident present to look at what you guys are so in love with, your quote, "master plan." I also toured the facilities. Having had a lot of experience with building from the ground up, I saw a lot of potential to refurbish, renovate, rather than just destroy and take down. But that's not why we're here. We're here because the Friends of the Ross Firehouse was formed because some members of this council would not listen to the public. The public is unaware of what is going on. They do not know what your plan is. And you did not hold any kind of, I saw, any kind of workshops or anything like that. So now you want $85,000 of the tax holders' money in order to fight the tax holders. That makes no sense at all. That, to me, you can't make this stuff up. How in the world could you expect to have $85,000 in order to fight what the Friends of the Ross Firehouse want to propose when you won't even meet with them? You wouldn't meet with them, Bill. You wouldn't meet with them, Julie. And all they want to do is show you alternatives, which the town wants. The town wants alternatives to what you are proposing. So I don't understand. You say you want to have $85,000 to show the town what exactly they're getting into when you don't even know because you haven't met with the people of the Ross Firehouse, the Friends of the Ross Firehouse. When I went around and got signatures from a lot of people in town, they knew nothing. But every single one of them said, "Who wouldn't want to retain the Ross Firehouse if they could? If it's fiscally possible, who wouldn't want to retain it? Who wouldn't want to preserve the historic quality of the beautiful town of Ross rather than putting up some obnoxious, big, commercial-looking office building?" I don't know. It just is amazing to me. I don't see that this is the time to say, "Okay, we're going to give you $85,000 of the taxpayers' money in order to fight the taxpayers," when you don't even know what the Friends of the Ross Firehouse are proposing. You don't know the alternatives because you will not sit down and look at the alternatives with the Friends of the Firehouse. And that, to me, is like unbelievable. You were elected to support this town, to preserve this town, and it seems like it's ego-driven now, ego-driven, that you do not want to amend your plan to take a look at what alternatives there might be. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Barbara. I just want to be clear that Bill and I met twice with representatives of FORF. Next, public comment person.
My name is Brian Solman. I've lived in Ross for 37 years. I'm retired physician, having been on the staff of Ross Hospital when it was active back in the late 70s and early 80s. I was on the staff of Marin General, now Marin Health, for 33 years and at the same time on the staff of Kent Field Rehabilitation Hospital, Nevada Hospital, and Sonoma Valley Hospital. Taking emergency calls and coverage at all of those hospitals, as well as maintaining my own regular daily practice. I'm here to strongly support the proposal to obtain an outside, independent, objective, expert analysis of the issues involving the Ross Fire Station. I believe this will provide valuable additional information, clarify the facts, dispel misunderstanding that is out there, and specify areas that have not been specified at all up to this date by the Friends of the Ross Firehouse. Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
I'm Molly Gamble, 14 Norwood Avenue. I, I don't think that there is a single person in this room that wants to spend $85,000 on a, on another report. Unfortunately, that's the downside of starting a ballot measure initiative. You do have an obligation to tell the people how much it's going to cost. This is something that the Marin IJ's editorial board pointed out about this ballot measure. It's you can't ask people to vote for groundswell support or a good idea. There actually is a price tag that goes with it. And that's all the town is doing here. That's why we're, you're being asked to spend this money. It's your fiscal responsibility to all of us to, to tell us how much this is going to cost. And you have to do this with an objective consultant and clearly Citigate is someone or is a consultant that has earned everyone's trust in this room. And I, it'd be great if we could just wait for, you know, the FORF, you know, numbers, but those are FORF numbers. And, and it's really important for the residents to have a third-party analysis of this. More importantly, I think we have to acknowledge how fire and emergency response is at the top of everyone's mind right now. And that's really thanks to the efforts of Friends of the Ross Firehouse. It's really important to acknowledge. And at the end of the day, this is a community that wants a good outcome and the residents want to be heard, even if we disagree. We all want the same thing. We want a safer, stronger community. And there is way more, I think, than we agree on than we disagree on. So I would love to be a part of a task force in this community that can work together with different ideas and different constituencies to make our public safety buildings better. What's been missing, I think, from the conversation is that many people in town feel that this issue was decided four and a half years ago, rather than last March. It was decided with a 5-0 vote rather than a 3-2 vote. I know things change, councils change, but many longtime residents have known that a plan to rebuild the Firehouse was discussed here in Ross for 30 years. With every council deciding, it was too hard, it was too complicated, it was too thorny, and they kicked it down the road. A Democratic vote happened in 2021 and it was unanimous. And since then, the town has been slowly, and I agree, it has been a very slow process and that's been frustrating. Many of us participated in that process. There's been a ton of community input. There's been a lot of expert analysis for a long time. And meanwhile, the actual physical structure has deteriorated with every passing year. So I want to make the point that some residences, residents are supportive of the long process to get here. And I know that perspective is not popular, but I appreciate it if, if it can be heard. Is my time up? I want to tell a very quick story and I want to ask if anybody in this room has actually called 911 in the last two months with a life-threatening emergency. So have I. Two-year-old fell in our pool and when he was pulled out, he wasn't breathing. Four minutes, there were six paramedics in our garden and two Ross police officers and they administered lifesaving care. I am eternally grateful to our public safety officers. And I believe that there is a path forward. I think we all want the same thing. I want to find some compromises. I think it's your job to find compromises. I want to make the plan better and I want you to stay on the course that you're already on.
Thank you. Anyone else in the room?
No, Mayor.
Anybody online, Cindy?
There are no raised hands online.
I'm raised. Katie Hur-
It looks like Katie Hurcorn.
Okay, I can't start the video, but my name is Katie Hurcorn. We live at 181 Leganitas Road in, in Ross, obviously. And I wanted to say, it was six years on the council and six years on the fire board and 20-some years running my own companies. I think I have a fairly decent understanding of the issues here. And I, of course, everybody wants fire service that is the best. I'm sorry.
Go ahead, Katie.
Please continue.
Okay. Everyone, of course, wants the best fire service, et cetera. There's no question about that. But I don't think that we have a clear understanding of cost at all. And I think it's critical that, that the town get that information. I know from Gensler Architects, which is the largest firm in the country, that they don't believe that this fire station can be redone, that the foundation just does not support it. And they've had architectural engineers take a look at the foundation. So that's a big thing right then because that means that you're completely rebuilding the fire station, which is a great deal of money. But the second thing is actually running a fire station. And that fire station, the cost of that will go on year after year after year. When we first combined with the Ross Valley Fire Department- When we first combined with the Ross Valley Fire Department, we had only a few real firefighters. The rest were apprentice firefighters. We had absolutely no obligations for retirement benefits or anything of that sort. And when we moved over, and we also had a shared police-fire chief. When we moved over to Ross Valley Fire Department, the cost was the same as running our own organization. Because we only had two men on a truck, there were all kinds of things that we had not included, training, all sorts of things. So we became much more professional with Ross Valley Fire Department. So if you put a fire station back and you only have two people per shift, you can't run a truck because you have to have three men on a truck. You have to, one, who runs the truck, one who stays with the truck, and I'm sorry, one who runs the truck, and then two people have to go into a situation. They can't just send one person in. So just that alone changes the dynamics because you can't have two, you have to have three, which means the numbers couldn't, would have to take into account that. I ran a budget based on the Ross Valley Fire Department current budget as well as the Kentfield budget. And yes, Kentfield, $16 million, I believe, and I can't recall off the top of my head what Ross Valley Fire Department was. It was more because there are more stations. But it would cost us, if we were doing everything by ourselves, senior management, building, having capital costs for the fire, you know, the fire trucks, et cetera, et cetera, the first year would be $12 million to the residents, divided by, you know, our small number of households. And so we would be tripling our costs from Ross Valley Fire Department. Now, my numbers might not be right. Citigate will do this a lot better than I can. It took me a number of weeks, but it's a direct comparison with those two fire stations. The problem is, you have a cost sharing.
Mayor?
Yes.
Yep. Katie, your time is up. If you could wrap it up in one or two sentences.
Basically, just that the costs are significantly more than anybody has acknowledged at this point, and that's why it's so important to have this report, because we need to know.
Thank you. Anyone else online wanting to make public comment at this time?
Doesn't show the same way a webinar does. One moment.
Looks like iPhone 15, Elena.
iPhone 15, DeElena, please go ahead.
Yes. Hi. Yes. Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hello? Okay, good.
Yes.
Sorry, I'm driving. As I mentioned, this time is really, really hard for people who have kids. I'm driving, you know, without service, with service, and so I'm glad at least I'm able to talk. But I think one question I have is a study that the Citigate is going to do if we go forward with this. How would they quantify the cost of losing your house? Or how would they quantify the loss of brain damage to a child that fell in a pool and couldn't be resuscitated in time or, you know, had long-term brain damage from being, you know, in a coma or whatever? My cousin fell in a pool, was not rescued, was, sorry, was rescued within four minutes, maybe similar to Molly Gamble's. And you asked the mom how that, you know, how the daughter's doing, and she said, thanks to the time, the little time that it took the paramedics to come, my daughter is fine. Like, is the study going to quantify that, the cost of not having the fire department? Thank you.
Thank you, Elena. Anybody else online, Cindy?
One moment. I don't see any other participants wanting to speak, Mayor.
Okay, thank you, everyone. So we will bring it back to the council for a discussion on whether or not to adopt Resolution Number 2542 ordering the preparation of an Election Code Section 9212 report. Who wants to go first?
I'll go, Mayor. We need an objective, an up-to-date report to share with all Ross residents. Yes, I support this resolution. $85,000 for clarity, objectivity is worth it so that this town can move on.
Here, I'll go next. Just one clarification about the FAQ document. I actually didn't support that document. The day after working with it, I contacted the town manager and Mayor to say that I didn't support it because of its length, some of the content, and several omissions, and submitted additional edits that I thought made it a better document, but I was told that they didn't want to keep working on it, and so what was written was sent out, so that it isn't actually a document that I had supported. But as far as this issue, I have a couple of comments and then a suggestion. You know, calling a last-minute special meeting on this topic is highly irregular. I think it shows a real disregard for the town's goal of transparency. Here are some of my thoughts. One, the entire town is interested in this issue of whether the town can keep a fire engine in Ross. It's a major safety issue since all 911 medical and fire calls are now answered by the fire engines. Firefighters are all either paramedics or EMTs, a fact not known by some council members until this summer. Without an engine in Ross, emergency medical and fire response times are increased by a minimum of two minutes. This issue is important to the community, but by scheduling this meeting at the last minute and from midweek afternoon, the town is practically guaranteed that there will be minimal public input. Number two, this last-minute special meeting was scheduled after months of refusing to actively engage with residents interested in this issue and after hundreds of residents signed a petition to place building a fire station on the ballot. This topic should have been placed on the agenda for the regular council meeting October 9, just three days away. Calling a last-minute special meeting looks like, one, the town didn't want public input, and, two, the town didn't want this topic discussed at this week's regular meeting when, with only four members scheduled to be present, there might not be enough votes to approve the $85,000 to study the ballot initiative. This topic shouldn't be on a special meeting agenda, but if there had to be a special meeting so that all council members could be present, it didn't need to be called with such short notice. It could have been held later this week, next week, maybe the week after. Three, there was an odd sequence of events scheduling this meeting. First, it was scheduled as an urgent close session. The next day, it became an urgent open session that was added. It wasn't ever clear why the meeting was, needed to be held so quickly with so little public notice. There's nothing noncompliant about this scheduling. But in my 16 years as a Ross School Board member and in my 11 years as a Ross Town Council member, I've never experienced a situation like this where a meeting almost seems to be clandestine. But besides being irregular, this meeting is a poor response to the hundreds of residents who are concerned about public safety. Whether or not there's a ballot measure and whether or not it passes, the town still has hundreds of residents wanting to improve town safety by keeping a fire engine in town. That issue won't go away even if the ballot initiative goes away. And those hundreds of voters won't be voting to approve a multimillion-dollar bond measure which is needed for the town's current building plan, which doesn't include a fire station. The obvious reasonable response to the hundreds of residents who want to restore the fire station isn't to dismiss and try to block their efforts, but to meet with them, to compare their building plans with the town's, to discuss funding together, to see where there's common ground. This is what should be on the town council agenda. I regret that we're in this situation, but I think that the town was misled five years ago into voting to close the fire station. Residents were assured then that an ambulance could provide mostly equivalent emergency services, but that's simply not true. It's the fire engines that respond to emergency medical and fire calls. An ambulance rarely arrives before the fire engine and serves primarily as just the transport vehicle to the hospital. The town needs a fire station with a fire engine. This is a safety issue, and this issue won't go away regardless of what happens to the initiative. With that perspective and taking into consideration points raised this afternoon, I would support funding a study of the cost to maintain an independent fire station in Ross, but I wouldn't support funding anything else. I think that studying more and spending more at this point is wasteful and unnecessary. Ideally, there would be some collaboration with Friends of Ross Firehouse. Hopefully, that would be possible. It would be foolish for both entities to be funding the same study. Thank you.
Bill?
Let me just correct the record on a couple of things. First of all, the assertion by one of the speakers that when we adopted the site plan, there was no public input. That's totally wrong. There was a lot of public input. There was a tour of the facilities. We had multiple meetings. We can't force people to go to these things, but we do make an effort for outreach. Secondly, this idea that we won't even talk to the Friends of the Ross, you know, the Friends of the Ross Fire, whatever it's called, FORF. I mean, that's just not correct, and I know that because I'm one of the people who met with Bob Hearst and Ed Dong, and I don't know why this keeps being reported, I mean, repeated. For heaven's sakes, and the way I left it with them is, show me your plans. If there's a way to do this cheaper, I'm very interested. As far as the Firehouse is concerned, I have said from day one, we said back in 2021, if the funds are there, we'll have a Firehouse. As far as I know today, the funds are not there. And we even had a Marin Independent Journal article saying, you know, the proponents need to explain how this is going to be paid for. So what this report is going to do is start the discussion, provide an independent perspective on what the likely costs are. Now, with respect to the comment that we're spending $85,000 to fight the taxpayers, we're spending $85,000 so the taxpayers can have independent, accurate information, all right? The taxpayers, one way or another, are going to foot the bill for whatever we do, and I think they should have some accurate information. Five-year-old information, incomplete information is not information that will be useful to the taxpayers in deciding what to do. I mean, we have never had a cost assessment of, I mean, a recent one, of what it would cost just to use the existing Firehouse, and then we'd have to change the rest of the site plan to accommodate that. What would that cost? We've never had any kind of independent study of what would be the cost of operating the Firehouse. Look at, I mean, we have to look carefully at this initiative. It doesn't say maybe or we should. It says, we shall have a Firehouse, and it shall be an operational Firehouse with fire engines, with firefighters. In other words, an operating Firehouse. There is a cost to that. That money has to come from somewhere, and as we sit here today, I don't know where it would come from. But let's at least start with knowing how much money that is. The Q and A that went out just had a figure that was based on a figure, I think, from the Kentfield Station or something like that. We need to have an expert, and it would be Citigate, probably, tell us how much is it going to have, cost, two firefighters, two fire engines, equipment, and then ongoing, what's it going to cost? So I don't think this is anything contrary to the voters, and we do have some, a time factor here. We can't just do this whenever we feel like it. We've got 30 days, and if it's going to be an accurate report, the more time we have to put that together, since we don't really know when the county's going to certify this. So I'm very much in favor of this, and I think everybody should be in favor of it. I don't think it's a waste of money at all. I think it's going to potentially save money by helping us narrow the issues and have a very intelligent discussion. If the people of Ross want to pay for this, and it will be quite a bill, great, okay? I said back in 2021, I would like to have a Firehouse. I'm willing to pay higher taxes, but I didn't think that, you know, the public supported that. And we will need two-thirds of whatever we do. So let me just close by saying, I am perfectly willing to talk to, you know, people like Bob Hearst. I welcome the chance. Bob and I both have a similar background. I mean, it diverges in a way, but I, we keep hearing nobody on the council has development experience. Actually, I do. And I would be very much like to review those plans, and then I would like, perhaps down the road, to get some additional commentary on it. I'd like the discussion to continue. Unfortunately, when you have an initiative, it triggers some deadlines, and that's why we're here, really. I mean, frankly, I don't think three more days would make a big difference, but I'm the reason we're doing it tonight. I just can't do it Thursday, and if that's a problem for people, you know, it's unfortunate. That wasn't my intent. So just let me close referring back to what Molly said about the call to her house. I asked Dan Mahoney, how long did it take for the fire engine from Station 19 to get to that house? Three and a half minutes. Actually, three minutes and 36 seconds. Not eight minutes, not eight minutes plus two minutes. Three minutes and 36 seconds after we closed our Firehouse. I mean, think about that. Things have changed since that Citigate report. Anyway, hopefully, that'll be a part of our ongoing discussion, too. Those are my comments.
Yeah, I'll go next. I am totally supportive of having this report. I think more information is always better. We need to refresh the existing information. We can't just rely on FORF's information. We need objective information, and this is a mechanism to allow us to get that independent information. And I'm sorry, Elizabeth, that you feel like this is a clandestine meeting. There are lots of challenges trying to plan a council meeting with many, many busy people, and this is such an important issue, it was critical to have all five council members attending and participating in this meeting. And, you know, I want to reiterate Bill's comments about meeting with the FORF representatives I met. Bill and I met with Stephanie DiMarco early on for probably an hour and a half or two hours. Bill and I also met with Ed Dong and Bob Herbst. I'm more than happy to meet with people. It's really important when we meet that we have a common understanding of the facts, and that has been missing from the FORF representatives. And so hopefully, this report will help us bridge the gap and bring the parties together and have a more common understanding of what the actual facts are. I wanted to correct the record also that we are not planning on building some industrial monstrosity to replace the existing Mediterranean Revival-style buildings. We committed in the facility's master plan that we would replicate that architectural design, so people should not be fearful of that. I'm very concerned about how we meet our housing element. We agreed with HCD that we would have nine affordable housing units on our site based on the understanding that the fire station would close and not be rebuilt. I do not understand how we have nine affordable housing units on that site if we also have a fire station on the site. So I think this report will help bring people together. I would be more than happy to form some kind of a task force, as Molly mentioned, to have people working together on architectural design. I would welcome the expertise of the members of the FORF Real Estate Development Professionals to help us value-engineer and look at costs. And, you know, it's very important, I agree with what Elizabeth's saying, it's very important that we work together and bring this community together. So hopefully, this report will help us do that. Matt, did you want to add anything?
I was going to just make a quick comment before Matt speaks, and that is, yes, we're all talking about meeting together. I think it's critical that those meetings be at the town council level. We need to have public input. We need to have both, you know, all interested parties be able to share their information, their opinions, and have comments. So I don't think that, you know, a private meeting is what we need to be headed for. I think we need public meetings with both groups, and I think that that's how we can move this forward. That's how we can find common ground.
Yeah, I was actually thinking of some kind of a citizens advisory task force that could advise on design, separate from the town council. I think people get too heated in these town council meetings. There's too much polarization. I think there's much more opportunity to come together in a more informal way and then come to the town council together.
But on the other hand, when it's public, everyone has their say, and there's no wondering, like, whose side And there's no wondering, like, who, whose side is somebody representing in a meeting that you couldn't, couldn't listen to? I would say give a few public meetings a chance, and if that's falling apart, then move to some ad hoc committee. But I, I think it should be in the.
It seems like, well, I'm getting off topic, but we had a, we had a big public meeting in March and, you know.
What Ben, Julie was to maybe agendize this as a separate item just because it's not, he was sort of admonishing us.
That's a good, good suggestion, Ben. Thank you. Matt, you have something to say?
When don't I, Julie? I think it's important to understand how we got here. You know, why, you know, why is this town divided and what happened? And as a new council member, one of the first things I looked at was the town budget. And I was given a binder. And the number one expense that the town spends money on is fire, to like 2.7 million approximately. And I was shocked because the fire is shared, it's a shared resources versus the police force that we have in town is completely ours. And I said, well, why are we spending so much on fire? Well, it turns out that 12 or 13 years ago, a deal was struck with Ross Valley Fire Department where we were told that we, in order to join up with them, are going to spend about a quarter of the budget, even though our town represents only about 10% of the population. And so for 12 to 13 years, we've been subsidizing the department to the tune of a million-plus a year. And so that led me to, well, wait a minute, why haven't we been keeping up our, our buildings? You know, why, why have we not? Well, maybe because we've been spending so much money subsidizing Fairfax, because Fairfax pays less than we do to the fire department. So there's just been sort of a failure of leadership that has led to our buildings becoming decrepit and us signing very poor contracts where we are spending way more than we should to be a part for these services. So in 2021, on the heels of COVID, there was, you know, workshops, et cetera, put together. I would say the timing of that was really poor, given that it was COVID, but there was no public vote. There was no, there was some surveys sent out to the public. And at that time, many of the members of the Forth came forward to the council and said, hey, the, the estimates you have here are absurd to remodel the building. And they're all, you know, development experts and said, you know, I don't know what's going on, but we should, we should clearly look at that before saying no to the fire station. Because those, and they, they came up with very detailed analyses. So when, when this came back, I asked, I went through, I know Julie reads the minutes. I was like, who submitted comments in 2021? And there were several from this group. They called themselves, I think, the Citizens to, you know, Support the Fire Station. And I reached out to them. I reached out to them and I said, hey, I want to learn more about this issue. It's coming before us. What happened? They said, I don't want to talk to you. You're on the town council. They never listened to us. They didn't listen to us in 2021, and now our fire station's being closed, and I don't want to talk to you. And I felt like, wow, I, I don't know what it is, but there's a feeling, even though there's all these public meetings, that the public is not heard. And what is the best way for the public to be heard? A vote. A vote of the people. It goes on a ballot, you get to decide. Guess what? You don't want a fire station in town, you vote no. You want a fire station in town, you vote yes. And then we've heard directly from the people on an issue that is so important to them, their health and safety. I don't feel comfortable as a council member making that decision for anybody. I think we're just five people who represent 2,500. Why not let the 2,500 have their voice be heard? And quite frankly, that's all this initiative is saying. Let the people decide and let them vote. If you don't like it, Molly, you vote no. If you don't like it, Katie, you think it's too expensive, you vote no. But what I have, take issue with is that all along the way that these groups of people have been coming forward, they have not felt heard. I came to the council meeting earlier, the RPOA held a meeting. It was standing room only in here, and people were so upset about the station being closed. And those people did not feel heard. In March, the meeting was so crowded that the police told people they had to stand outside of the room because there wasn't enough room for them. We got hundreds of, of public comments asking, please, pleading with us to try to save the fire station. They did not feel heard. So now they, the citizens have decided to put a ballot measure together because they finally want to feel heard. They want the choice to vote. And what could be more democratic than that? Letting the people vote. So for me, this report seems like a stalling tactic. I, I'm sure that people disagree, but I feel like it's a stall tactic. The rush to do this meeting and giving the public one-day notice is a terrible fact pattern. And it sort of continues the dialogue that people don't feel like they, their, their opinion matters and that they are heard. The council wants to meet at times that's convenient for the council, not for the people. We don't want the people to vote. We don't want this ballot measure. Let's come up with more consultant reports that tell you it's going to cost too much. I, for one, want to see what the Forth puts forward. I want to see their estimates. I want to see if we can save the fire station, because if we can and it's affordable, I'd like to do that. I think most people do. And all I've ever heard is it can't be done. It can't be done. It's impossible. Haven't you read the?
Matt, can you wrap it up, please?
Don't you know Gary Gensler, who runs this billion-dollar company, said it can't be done, it can't be done? Well, here's this little group that's saying it can't be done.
Matt, can you wrap it up?
The ones that could.
Please wrap it up.
Why can't we hear what they have to say? So I am against the spending of this $85,000 as a complete waste of government money to go back to the same consultants that already gave us the same reports that told us it couldn't be done. Why not go to some new consultants? Why not ask for new ideas? Why not bring together new voices to this discussion? Because clearly, the same ones have led us to this place. The last thing I'm going to say is, the town plan is dead on arrival. It requires two-thirds majority to pass a bond measure, and we clearly don't have two-thirds majority that want that plan. And everyone's talking about the cost of the fire station. This plan, the Civic Center, is $21 million. It doesn't even include a fire station. It's an absurd, obscene amount of money that nobody's going to support. So the only alternative, there is no Plan B. There's no alternative that this council's come up with. The only plan we have is to go together, come together and get different advisors to figure out a way out of this mess that we're in. Because there's no way that we can build the Civic Center without the bond measure. So I don't really understand what the council's trying to do because we don't have the money to do the plan that we want to do.
I just want to correct a couple things that Matt, that you just said. We have not been subsidizing Ross Valley Fire for the last 13 years. The, the council in 2012 negotiated a deal. It agreed to pay Ross Valley Fire the same costs that we were paying to have a separate Ross station. And in light of the closure, our costs have actually gone down significantly by more than $300,000. We're paying a lot less than what Fairfax is paying. And there's no negotiation for a JPA where the costs are based solely on the population. It's much more nuanced than that. And, and, you know, to, to suggest that it should be based on the population exclusively is really naive and not acknowledging the, the facts and the situation that Ross was in in 2012 or any other, any other agency is in when they're trying to join a JPA. I, you know, I, I was the mayor in 2020 and 2021. We conducted lots and lots of workshops, meetings, questionnaires. We had more than 300 people participate in the questionnaire. We actually delayed our decision in January of 2021 because we were cognizant that people wanted to have a fire station. And we tried to raise private funds for a fire station. We were only able to raise $350,000 in pledges for a fire station. And it's very difficult to have someone want to give to a fire station when the experts, who I rely on, are saying that it is not necessary, given where Kentfield is, given where San and Salmo Station 19 is, and given the fact that the Ross Valley paramedics will remain in Ross. The other thing that I wanted to just mention, there is a Plan B, Matt, and you know what the Plan B is. We have saved more than $12 million. We can phase this project. We can prioritize and build the paramedics and the police station first and then address the facilities for the public works and the admin later, if that's necessary. So, you know, I, it, it, it's very painful for me to hear you say that the leadership on the town council for the last decade or two has failed the town. It has not. This is a very complicated, nuanced issue. And we need to come at it together with creative minds and try to problem solve instead of polarizing the facts. So with that, I think we have at least three people who want to go forward with this elections report. I think we need a motion.
By the way, Sleepy Hollow pays 12 and 1/2% Julie. So I, just to, to be very clear about this JPA.
Sleepy Hollow joined the party really early. You know, there's a penalty for joining the party late. And, you know, it's, it's not going to be based on population. That's just not how you do it.
Somehow Sleepy Hollow pays it based on their small size. So I just, you, you're saying I'm not telling the truth? The truth is, we pay more than Fairfax. We are the size of.
We don't pay more than Fairfax now.
We do pay more than, it's a fact of the JPA. You got to read things, Julie. We pay more than Fairfax. Our percentage is higher than Fairfax.
No, Matt, I'm on the fireboard. We do not. So you, you need to read the current budget. But we're getting off topic. Could we please have a motion?
Yes, I would like to move that we adopt Resolution Number 2542.
Second.
Cindy, can you call the roll?
Mayor McMillan?
Yes.
Councilmember Kircher?
Yes.
Councilmember Dowling?
Yes.
Councilmember Salter?
No.
Mayor Protem Robbins?
No.
With a vote of three to two, the motion passes.
Thank you. And thank you to the public for attending and participating online. We are now adjourning to a closed session, so we'll let the room clear. We'll take a five-minute break and then resume at.
Mayor, before we take a break, I want to see a public comment for the items on the closed session.
Oh, thank you, Ben. Any items for closed session from the public?
There does not appear to be any.
Give me a second, mayor. I see no raised hands online.
Thank you. Okay, we will resume at, what time is it there?
4:25. So you want to resume when?
Okay, we'll resume at 4:30. Is that okay?